Recording in progress.
Very good. Good evening, everyone. Today is December 12, 2024. This is the planning, uh, no, board of selectmen meeting. And this meeting has been recorded and broadcast via our local cable access channel WCAT, Zoom, Facebook, and YouTube. If anyone in the audience is recording, please let us know. Also, a quick reminder, um, if you're coming to talk to us, please identify yourself direct to me, the board, and that way we can get started. We're gonna start with the pledge of allegiance. Sam?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we're so grateful to have here Steve Duff for the Quaybog Regional School District. Superintendent Steve, you have monthly update for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hi, David. Good to see you.
Good seeing you, Steve.
Um, we'll start off with, as we talk about every month, we have a monthly meeting, uh, safety committee meetings. Uh, this month, we were able to do a safety presentation for the entire district. Uh, thank you to Chief Lalette, Chief LaVoye, Chief Lapierre, and Chief Haglund for coming. Uh, we brought all our staff together to talk about different situations that could potentially arise that we talk about in our safety committee meetings. Chief LaVoye and Chief Lalette have always been tremendously supportive of the school district and of the kids in our community, as well as the rest of the community members. Uh, but they were there after their own hours to come out and help support our staff and our students. So Chief LaVoye and Chief Lalette, thank you very much for your continued support. Uh, budget update. Uh, we're continuing to work through our budget now. We got some initial numbers in just on electricity. We went out to bid on transportation. We talked a little bit about that. Transportation's looking like it's gonna be somewhere between a seven and a nine percent increase this year. Um, that is after going out to bid. We're hoping to stay under double digits, which we did do, but there's still a little bit of work to be done there. Um, but we did open those bids on Monday, and that's looking like where we're gonna end up a bit. Electricity was down six cents going into the next year, which is outstanding, which will help with all the energy efficiencies that we did last year. So I know we said in the last year's meeting that in five years we'll really see those incentives once we get that on-bill repayment done. Um, but with a six cent decrease this year, hopefully we're gonna see, um, that affect the budget a piece. Uh, gas is up, uh, two cents per therm. Um, we use gas for cooking at Quaybog, um, and gas at Westbrook Field Oil here. Health insurance is looking like it's gonna be six to 10%. We'll go over this when we go into our, our budgets, and we are continuing with teacher negotiations now. We're in the middle of negotiations. Uh, the contract ends on August 31st, so we're hoping to have that tidied up as quickly as possible so we can have an accurate number going into budget season. Uh, we did participate. Quaybog and Westbrook Field and Warren Elementary School participated in the Light the Night. That happened down on the Common, uh, over the weekend. Our students sung, um, and did the countdown for the tree lighting. Uh, it was a great event. I know that the snow was not welcomed, but once it was there, I think it added another element to the, to the night, and I think it was spectacular. I think it was probably the, uh, in my years, one of the more well-attended nights that we've had for Light the Night, so I thought that was spectacular. We did have a snow day, uh, this week with Jeremy Olson. I can't say enough about Jeremy. His constant communication with myself. We started our talks on, I forget which day it was, but we started in the afternoon with a two-hour delay. Um, and we're on the phone at four o'clock in the morning. Uh, and Jeremy has been such a great resource, and, um, you know, I think us supporting him and him supporting the school district and getting a good read on what's going on with the roads is hugely important, and I think we had a great call with the Noah's School. We got a lot more snow than we had anticipated. This weekend, we have Beauty and the Beast, uh, which is Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Friday night at seven, Saturday night at seven, and Sunday at two o'clock. It's, uh, the performance of Beauty and the Beast through the theater program. Um, I've been to, for 15 years, I've been to plays. This potentially has, has the potential to be the best play that we've done in the last 15 years, so I invite any community members to come out and see it. It's gonna be spectacular. Thank you to Town Administrator Ferrera and Town Administrator San Angelo, who is no longer with the town of Westbrook Field, um, but they were able to use some of the opioid money to have Chris Herron come and talk to our students yesterday. Um, Town Administrator Ferrera was there, and some members from the Warren Police Department were there as well, as well as Rich Lapierre. Um, Chris Herron is a former Celtic player who had some, uh, issues with drugs and heroin. Um, and I think that his message to our kids was a really good message, um, and I think that our kids took a lot away from it. So Jim, thank you very much for co-sponsoring that with the town of Westbrook Field and advocating for that to come to our school. Um, so I, I can't thank you enough. I didn't talk about it in our last, uh, meeting, but our EMT program is up and running. Uh, that was one of the highlights that I did wanna point out last meeting, but we had a lot of things going on, and I missed that. Uh, we did talk about the EMT program, uh, being an essential part to our community after talking with Chief LaVoye and Chief Lapierre, um, and the Westbrook Field ambulance. EMTs are hard to find right now. Um, Chief LaVoye was spectacular during our football games. He does the Pop Warner football games. He's all over the place, working crazy hours. It's hard to find EMTs. Um, and we recognize that along with our CNA and our early childhood education, finding career pathways for kids that are not just meaningful for them, but meaningful for our communities as well. Um, so we do have the EMT program running, and we're hoping that we can have some EMTs come out of that and go right into the field, which would be outstanding. Um, Town Administrator, we did a Jingle Fund. The Warren Police Department does, uh, does , uh, toys during Christmas for families that need toys. Um, we did partner with Detective, uh, Detective Warren with that, um, and we helped move some of the gifts out from the basement here. I wanna thank once again Town Administrator, uh, Ferrera for letting the kids come in and talk to them a little bit when we're here the other day, just about what does the Town Administrator do and getting the aspect from the local government piece of it. That was nice of Jim to take us on, on the spot like that. And the last piece that I really have is our Veterans Day Assembly. We have a Veterans Day Assembly. Derek was our guest speaker for our Veterans Day Assembly. Um, we, uh, there are folks within our community that are on the Veterans Hall of Fame, um, on the wall outside of the, outside of the auditorium at the school, and we induct different members every year as families, um, bring either, um, their children or themselves forward. They get inducted onto the wall for people that had graduated from Quaybog that, um, provided service to our country. Um, and we're fortunate to have Chairman Velez there, uh, to do the speaking as the guest speaker. Uh, it was a great event, so we thank you very much. In terms of the budget, uh, we'll be looking January. Uh, when I come back in January, I'll give you an exact timeline on when we're looking, but we're hoping to have a preliminary budget to you in February. Um, but we just have to wait for the numbers to come in and see where we end up with teacher negotiations. But we will do our very best like we did last year, and we'll continue our open line of communication so that everybody is aware of where we're at. Um, and that's my update for the month of December.
Thank you, Superintendent Steve.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Any questions?
I, yes.
Do you have any questions?
I do. Um, first of all, great job. You're doing an outstanding job as superintendent for schools. We really appreciate that. The community notices it, and we notice it, and thank you for that. Um, the other thing is the EMT program. Are you getting a lot of individuals looking to enter into it?
We have eight students right now in it.
Okay.
Um, so in the eight students that are in it, um, five were from the Fire Academy from last year. They were juniors last year, seniors this year, and we have three that were coming out of the CNA program as juniors last year and seniors this year.
Okay.
So that's a, that's more of a specialized program, but I think that the success rate is gonna be, um, is, we're gonna have a good success rate with it this year. The pass rate on the first time through EMT, Adam can tell you more about that, but it, it's really a difficult test to take the first time around. But coming out with, they do a lot of first responder stuff with the Fire Academy, and then with the CNA program, you have CNA, phlebotomy, EKG. You have a lot of medical background coming out of that program. So I think with our students coming out of those two programs last year into the EMT program this year is gonna pay huge dividends, and we have kids that are already doing ride-alongs in ambulances, so they're already getting exposed to, to that type of, um, that, that type of experience.
That's, that's awesome, 'cause it's like, these are the careers that we need in our communities, and people, you know, for whatever reason, just aren't pursuing these careers anymore. And with having those academies, having the Fire Academy and the EMT, um, course now, that's, that's amazing to have in a community, especially when there are kids in our community. So the chances are they're gonna be working within our community if they pursue that career, and it's a very good career, too. So, very good. I, I'm very excited to see how it turns out in the next few years and, you know, how well it does.
As are we.
It's definitely a good thing to have, and thank you very much for allowing that to happen and everything the chiefs have been doing to help it go along, too. So...
No, we appreciate it, and we appreciate, appreciate the support of the town and the select boards and finance committees.
Thank you, Steve.
We already know he's doing an awesome job. We don't need to tell Jim anymore.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Steve.
Then in our agenda, we have the Milltown Public Health Coordination presentation on the possible installation of a Nalox boxes in town buildings.
Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. My name's Erin McMurray, and I have Ashley Jedney with us. I am the Shared Services Coordinator for the Milltown's Public Health, um, the Shared Service Agreement that you guys are a part of, and Ashley is our Shared Service Social Worker. Um, I have some papers that I'm gonna pass out. Is that okay?
Sure, yes.
I'll take colored. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So we are here today, um, to discuss the installation of Nalox boxes being put into Town Hall, um, the police station, and quite frankly, anyone else who maybe wants them throughout the town of Warren. Um, Ludlow is part of a...
The lab?
Community Nalox own purchasing program. Thank you. Um, so when Paulina, the health director over in Ludlow, applied for the program, knowing that she was a part of, or gonna be a part of the Shared Services Agreement, she kinda wrote in for all four of the towns. Um, so we've been working and getting these installed in all four of the towns that we're working in. They're currently installed in Ludlow, Palmer. We just got approved in Westbrook Field, and now we're just talking to you guys. So Naloxone is a overdose prevention drug, so if someone was to have an overdose, you can administer Naloxone through the nostrils, um, and it reverses an overdose. Installing these, it would be completely free to the town. We would stock them. We would, you know, respond to, you know, them being empty and being needed to be refilled. It would be no cost to you guys in the town. Um, it would essentially just be putting, you know, the power back into people's hands and giving them another resource. Um, we've talked to your chief of police, and we've gotten his support on the program. We've talked to the Board of Health, and we've gotten their support. So now, we're in front of you guys. Do you have any comments, questions for me?
I, I think it's, it's very, it's very nice. It's very good. Um, I have no questions. I'm just excited about it.
Bye-bye. Happy to hear that.
I have, I have a question, um, but it's more for the chiefs because I know about the product and everything. But, um, chiefs, do you both support this?
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
When they came to talk to me, it's a no-brainer for me. They put it in the lobby. People have access to it, and it'll be monitored by us, too, so...
Absolutely. So I'm, I'm a firm yes on this because I think any chance you have that opportunity, chief wants to say something else.
Just, I, I know this question's gonna come up if someone's not in overdose and they use it, but it's gonna harm them, you know, well...
There's no adverse effects.
Right.
If somebody utilizes it, when, even if you're not having an overdose, it will not affect you. It will not do anything else. It's not gonna harm you. It will reverse, uh, an overdose with heroin or an opium, uh, opiate.
Correct.
Um, so it's definitely something I see could be useful, and it's one of those tools that you have in your box. It's better to have it and never need it than to need it and not have it.
Absolutely. A hundred percent. It's better safe than sorry. I mean...
And it's not costing us any money to have it here.
Correct. It's for the community. That's, that's what we're trying to do, you know, make things accessible to people.
Absolutely. I'm, I'm good, yeah.
What, what are the locations?
So right now, we're thinking Town Hall, the police station, the fire department.
Lobby entrance?
Hmm?
Lobby entrance or...
We could do lobby entrance. I personally like the idea of them being in a, um, bathroom 'cause it's a little bit more private. Um...
We should probably have them mounted near the AEDs.
Yeah, we can do that.
Because this way, we can monitor both of them, and everybody knows where they are, 'cause they know where the AED is. They know where the stop-the-bleed kit is, and we know...
Yeah.
For overdose.
Absolutely.
And it's centrally located within the building for us.
At the end of the day, it's your building. I'll put it wherever you let me put it.
Again, if it's, I understand your need for privacy, but if somebody's overdosing, everybody's running to you to help you anyways, so...
Absolutely. No, but next to the AED...
Privacy kinda goes out the door.
Yeah. Next to the AED is the perfect spot. That's where it is in Ludlow. I see them there all.
Right by the door.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
I would think Highway Department, too, right?
Um...
Because we have AED in Highway? Where do we have the AEDs, chief?
You have two here. You have one in Highway, one in the Senior Center, and one in the Sewer Department, obviously, police and fire. Um, yeah, you may not meet them too well. I mean, I would say definitely up here, 'cause you have a lot of, uh, community members coming in and out of the building. Um, you know, uh, you know, certainly we can take some at the police and fire stations. That's, that's why I'd say we carry, obviously, we carry it down there, so, um, but I'd be really happy to have a, a conversation. Do you have, do you have a card on you?
Yeah.
'Cause the Senior Center would probably be a good place, too, just in case, 'cause not that you're doing it, but if you handle the wrong thing and you're not aware of it, you can accidentally OD.
Absolutely.
Even though you're not a user. So...
At the end of the day, we are, you know, we're coming to you guys and hoping that you guys will set an example for the rest of the town, and my hope is that other people will see it and, you know, ask for one or reach out to us. There's no limit on how many of these we can really get at the end of the day, so as many as possible is my goal.
So as, as much as Narcan is out there and available, um, I, I work for a federal agency, and we're not allowed to have Narcan.
Interesting.
Which is crazy.
Yeah.
They don't give us Narcan.
I'll give you Narcan.
I would love to have Narcan, just in case.
You can have a little bit of the shots.
'Cause even my guys, 'cause my guy is fine.
I'm sure. Absolutely.
Some pretty serious stuff, so...
Um, do you guys have to make a motion and vote on it?
We do. Um, I'll make a motion to, let's see, where are we at? Make a motion to, well, we don't have anything on that.
So you can just make a motion to approve the Nalox boxes to be installed at the Shepherd Building, police station, fire station, and the senior center? Is that what you want?
Senior Center, Highway Department.
Highway, okay.
Wherever we can get them.
How many, is there a limit?
How about this? I make a motion to approve installing Knox boxes, well, Knox, not Knox boxes, what are they?
Nalox boxes.
Nalox and boxes, um, in all town buildings.
Perfect. There we go. We can start with four and go from there. So, okay? I'm kinda looking at the beginning of January, mid-January, for getting them and installing.
Just for this building here, we're gonna be having some painting done soon.
We can do it after the painting.
So, yeah, after the painting, that'd be great.
Absolutely.
And then I know the AEDs here are, are too high for, uh, for the eight, uh, for the, for the, um, ADA compliance issues. Thank you, men. And so we're gonna have to lower them, and so we will lower those, you know, be on the same level as the AEDs.
Uh, they get mounted to the wall. There's like anchors and screws. It's pretty easy.
Let's just do our motion first.
But...
So I, I second the motion. All in favor?
David Dufresne, I.
Derek Bellis, I. Motion approved. You are good to go. Thank you very much.
I have some paperwork for you guys to sign on my end. Thank you, guys.
That's why you're here, to work.
Yes. So I have a copy for me, and I have a copy for you, and I can email over a copy, um, email over a copy as well. This is just in that you are willing to participate. You can take your time if you feel... Email a copy from digital records as well.
Oh, they say the same thing?
Yes. I'd like to keep one, uh, one of them.
Instead of reading.
One at a time. I guess the only thing is that you haven't mentioned, like, there'll be someone coming with a phone, you can just, uh, place the card, and kind of just glance at it and see if it's empty, and we'll just let it slide, and cut out and throw it in.
Have you read it? Yeah.
Yeah, I can check on what I do with the AEDs and stuff like that, too.
So you want me to, David?
Yes.
Sign it?
Yeah, you can just see the bottom part, you know, off the top. If that's okay, or you don't have it at all.
I have, he's my cousin, yes. Yeah, he's a great guy, yeah. I wish I...
Would you like to keep a white copy for yourself as well?
Keep a copy.
Okay. Digital's fine?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next point of discussion and possible vote to close town offices on Tuesday, December 24, 2024, anticipated vote.
So I'm good with it. I'm, I'm good with closing the offices for the 24th. People should be home with their families in Christmas holidays. No problem with it?
Yeah, I don't have a problem either, and I'm just, um, you know, listening to Rich, his concern.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know... I, I really like the idea to get them to go to their families on the 24th, and I know some boards can't because of their modus operandi, and, um, I know that's just my personal feeling is, you know...
It's the nature of the job.
Yeah, and a lot of shopping to do. Um, yes.
Okay. My name's Madeline Watosik, and I'm here tonight to give you some information on this subject because I'm an oldie, I'm not saying a goodie, from the building in regards to the personnel holiday bylaws. So I'll read it first to explain what the policy was when I came and how it was changed by, um, the Board of Selectmen must have done an article at town meeting and changed it. So when I came in 2002, the top page was the policy. And I think that the Board of Selectmen wanted to, let me read it first so then other people can understand. It says, "If Christmas and New Year fall on Tuesday, then Monday shall be considered a holiday with pay. If Christmas and New Year's fall on a Thursday, then the Friday after will be a holiday with pay. If they are December 24th and 31st are regular working days for a full-time employee, they'll be granted a half a day without loss of pay." So it depended on what day of the week it was and whether it was a full day or a half a day. So the Selectmen put the article on town meeting and revised the bylaw, which was passed at town meeting, and took out the half a day and the full day, and in its place, putting two floating holidays, so that if anybody wanted to take the day off, the day before Christmas, they would use a floating holiday. Or I know when I worked here, most of us worked the day before New Year's. We weren't party animals, so, and then that way there, the, that person could use that floating holiday at whatever time. So as regards of having to close the building, this is just my understanding of what happened, is that's why they took that out and gave them two floating holidays that they can use. Anybody have any questions on it?
Yeah.
And I think it's pretty evident from when you read the first one to the second one. That was the intent, was to pull Christmas and New Year's out, and here's two holidays. If you wanna use one for Christmas, you can. If you don't, you wanna work all day, then work all day. The other thing that I know, um, and I, I, 'cause it's been many years, that some people chose not to take the whole day off. Um, so they have, may have worked a half a day and then used to have a personal day and kept that floating holiday for later. But what generally would happen is the administrative secretary would contact all the offices and say to the, you know, like, the department head, or the office, office, "Do you plan on having your office open on December 24th?" And then, you know, if everybody's, then that way there, the assistant assessor for the Board of Select would say that the building would be closed today due to staff holiday. But it was, wasn't a town, it wasn't, uh, it was a benefited holiday, not just a paid day off. Okay?
Great. So Christmas falls on December 25th, um, which is Wednesday, and then Tuesday is the 24th, so...
Break, Paco. The same situation's gonna occur the following week for New Year's. A lot of people would probably like to take the 31st off in preparation for New Year's Eve. That's when you celebrate, is New Year's Eve. I think the board is rem... I think the board is remiss if they're considering just granting a day off, and just disregarding the bylaws and the personnel policies that are in place already. It's, it's not the right thing to do. People have holidays granted to them, people have vacation days and two floating holidays. They use the floating holidays, they already get a half day off, it looks like. If I'm, maybe I'm misunderstanding the current policy, but it looks like they all.
They took that out from the first time. The change was taken out for the floating holiday.
For the floating holiday, so, okay. But they use their floating holidays if they wanna take it off. That's, it's unfortunate, and I, you know, obviously, there's sympathy to this notion, of course, but that's not the way you run the town. You don't run the town on your sympathies or on your whims. You run it according to policies and procedures, and I don't think anyone's gonna be upset if, instead of staying till four o'clock or their normal time, they're sliding out an hour early, I'm not advocating for that, of course, but, you know, it's just, just consider what you're deciding right now and do the right thing, please.
What do you, what do you think? What are our options, or like, not say the right thing?
You know, I, I think that, you know, in light of this information, um, you know, I think the board should consider this legislative intent that was made by a previous board in, in town meeting vote at one point in time, and, you know, considering the fact that there's two floating holidays, um, you know, um, you know, people have, have the ability to use them. You know, these things are, are tough decisions. But they're decisions that, you know, if the board wants to make them, they can make them.
Okay.
What do you think, David?
Well, to be honest, my heart, I'd love to give it to them, but the bylaw's the bylaw. And the bylaw says they get two floating holidays, and the intent was for that purpose. If they wanna take off on that, um, Tuesday, the twenty-fourth, they could utilize a floating holiday and utilize, hey, we're, we're gonna be closing the office. You know, reach out, if you're gonna be using your floating holiday on the twenty-fourth, let us know. And if everybody decides, yes, we're gonna use our floating holidays on that, no need for the town hall to be open, you know, close it, but if you get departments that say, no, we wanna work, I, you know, somebody might wanna take, like Mr. Paco said, somebody might wanna work, um, work the twenty-fourth, but take off the thirtieth, and maybe use it on the, the first, on the second, because the first is a day off, um, the first of the year. But people go out and party and have fun, so, leave it up to them. They, they got the floating holidays for that purpose. If they used up the floating holiday already, then they're probably not using their leave appropriately.
Then, yeah, do that personal vacation time they produce?
Right.
Okay, let's, uh, let's not get more of this, I, I agree with David, you know, hearts is, you know, for them to have a holiday, but we have to obey the laws, and just do what is right, so. I think we agree on that, do we have to?
Yeah, no, I would say, just say, no action taken, there's no, no vote to be changing or approve the holiday, um, it's, it's already there. You know, people get the days off through the floating holidays.
Okay, sounds good.
It's, it's the bylaw. You know, we gotta go by the bylaw, too. So, thank you very much for bringing that into our attention.
You know, like I said, I just, you know, wanted to, to know, because when I heard it, you know, I said, you know, and this happened, that's why I asked Adam, when did you come, Adam, cause I know me and Lisa were here, and maybe Carrie, but Carrie was a full-time then, so, it's just, like I said, an oldie, and I happened to be here when it got changed, because that other policy was so vague. So if it was on a Thursday, they give you a Friday off, well, that doesn't make any sense, well, you really should have Wednesday, so I think, because it's a half day, a whole day, it's this day, you gotta look at your personnel bylaw, okay, what am I off this year, because when's the holiday? And I think that was why, in this way here, if, you know, somebody doesn't want December thirty-first, well, they can use it another day.
Right. Yeah, we, we appreciate your feedback.
Yeah, well.
And, you know, on it, sincerely, if, if, you know, we, we, we don't know everything.
Well, I know you don't, and that's what I said, that's why I just said that I was here just to give you some information that I know you're probably not aware of.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have review to discuss and possible vote to adopt an updated building delay or closing policy for storm-related events.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So, before you this evening is a, a policy that I drafted, it's in draft form. It's for emergency closings, weather policies, uh, for non-emergency personnel. I think it, again, to piggyback off of what we just talked about, I think it, it's, it's, um, prudent for us to have a clear defined policy for when there is weather events, and what is and how we should follow it. And, and so, it's fair to the staff, it's fair to the public, um, to know how we're going to treat, um, severe weather events. And it breaks the policy down, and this is again, for non-emergency personnel. So, the policy would be broken down into three sections, so, if, if, if an employee was, was, um, you know, absent from, from work due to a weather when, when, when town operations were going on. So, say for example, we had somebody coming, um, you know, driving in, and they, they incurred, encountered a, a weather event, and the building was still open, um, you know, there's a, there's a, there's a procedure for that. There's a procedure and a policy then for early departure from work. So, for example, um, we, we're here, working in the building, and then a storm rolls in at, you know, ten in the morning, and how are we going to handle it, forgetting employees home, you know, at four o'clock in the afternoon? You know, what are the, what is the procedure, how is it gonna be dealt, who's gonna be responsible? What planning are we going to have to take to address that? And then finally, the last section would be if there was a, um, a delay or cancellation, an outright delay in the morning before employees got to work, or if there was an outright cancellation. You know, it was clear and evident to me that we needed this policy because of the last storm that we had. I did come to work for eight-thirty, and when I got here, the building was unlocked and wide open. So, it, it's clear to me that we need to have a policy, um, to make sure that, you know, obviously, the building's secure, um, number one, number two, to also make sure that staff is, is well aware of, you know, how we handle these types of events. This is the first draft that, uh, you know, that is before you this evening, so, my intent here was to give it to the board this evening, let the board, you know, you know, look at it from, from now until next Thursday, review it, and then, um, then possibly vote on it, you know, next, next Thursday.
I, I think it's a great, a good initiative, because I hate, like, we're, we're dealing with, oh, there's gonna be that much, no, yes, close it, no, no, close it, yeah, there's snow going, so what else? We, we can't take those decisions, you know, at that, at, you know, at eight o'clock in the morning.
Right, right.
So, it's good, I think we should give it a thought, and, and that way, it, it is, it's not in our, you know, that call in the morning, yes or no.
Right, 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 right.
I, I bet for, for, you know, usually I go by, you know, the school, they cancel or delay, my kids go there, so, that's what moves me to, you know, do it, but we have, this is good.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, Madeline Watazak, so you said this is an updated policy from the last policy?
No.
What is it? I, I didn't know we have a policy.
There was a policy, I do have a copy of it.
Okay.
I will give it to you after. The second thing, I just wanted to be careful, what you had just said about, um, making the call the night before, I remember it was last year or the year before, and I know it has happened a couple times. Quaybog closed, the town hall closed, and we got an inch of snow. So, I, I, I know it's a rough call, but the thing is, is that and, and everybody knows my purpose for being involved with the town is because I care about my town, and it's hard to make the right call when we know we worry about our employees and stuff, but then also, the people that pay our taxes have to get up and go to work, too. So, I think, you know, it's a, you need to weigh everything in together, I guess, is what I'm saying, when that decision's made, is that, yes, it's nice for the town employees, but we've, the benefits that we have is so much more than what a lot of the people that work, other than municipalities, or for the state, or the federal government, you know, the holidays, vacation time, and sick policy is just, you know, that's all I'm saying. But we do have policy, I'll leave you a copy, and you'll be surprised.
Yeah, let's see the other, let's see the policy, and even though we had a policy on it. Where are all these policies coming from? Why don't we have copies of these things?
You want to be, what came, just it came from the, well, you'd be surprised when, the first question I should have asked, David, since you've been on the Board of Selectmen, has there been a policy put into place?
There's been a few, yeah.
No, for this?
I don't think so.
Correct, cause this goes back to two thousand and seven. Okay. This should be in, that, I was surprised that there should be a file in your office that has any policy changes or any memos that go to the town employees to do any directions, so. Once you read it, you realize there was an issue, so. I know, I'm always a bearer of benefit.
No, no. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, yeah, thank you. Did you start before camp, before, after bed, or?
Yeah. That was actually, I think, March, I was part-time.
It doesn't affect you much, cause you're.
Did you see this? I just read it right now, yeah.
Can I just say one thing? I think it's critically important that if you guys are gonna make decisions about this, that you get in touch with the highway. He knows the roads, he watches the weather twenty-four-seven, he knows everything that's going on, he knows how long it's gonna take him to clean the roads, how safe the roads are, how everything is. Instead of just saying, taking a guess, or looking at your own phone, or looking out your window, call him, he's out on the road. He knows the roads in this town.
Is that the best that the board can do? Call highway and make a call?
So, I could tell you right now, this policy's probably not correct, because if we're telling you, you close the building, the town has to pay you anyways. You can't force an employee to take a leave day.
No, I, no, I understand, but, I mean, oh, I get, can I see it better?
Cause if we close for public safety, we can't tell you, you need to take a leave day or not be paid. If we, we force the closure, the employer has to pay you.
I'm just saying this was done, okay? I just wanted to make you aware that there was a policy. And that's what I thought when, um, Derek started talking, that he said this, we were updating the policy. That's why I just asked to whatever. This is what was decided, this is what was sent to the employees, and it was a long time ago, so I just wanted. But what I'm saying, no, but what I'm saying, I know for a state of emergency, yes, you gotta pay, okay? And I, in my other work years before I came here, there had only been once or twice in private businesses that they closed. One was for a hurricane, and one might have been another hurricane or whatever. But, that's a different story, that's all I'm saying, I just wanted you to make you aware of it.
Yeah, I, I, I think having a, an actual bylaw, not a bylaw, but a, a written policy on the subject, cause it's actually pretty good. This is four lines describing, and it was specifically because of one day that the building had to close, so they addressed it, and said, going forward, we're gonna, this is our policy going forward.
Or what I'm saying, I don't even remember, I can't tell you what happened, but I just wanted you to be aware in case something is said, oh, yeah, there was a policy, so I'm just bringing it to your attention. And, you know, this is up to you, you're the new Board of Selectmen now, so.
No, we, we didn't know about this, thank you for bringing it to our attention, and I think they were addressing a problem when they had it, but having a, a formal policy on the matter, so going forward, when it happens, this is what we'll do.
Right, and, and I don't like to sound like a broken record, and, and now that Jim is here, and when, when I worked here, and I had no, told Jim this quite a few years ago, before you got on, and, and a few years before that, I told him, I said, you know, we really need a HR person, a part-time person, and when the state did this regionalization, like, we're regionalized with the Board of Health, with Lidl, I said, we really should see about getting a HR person. That way there, they take care of it, a lot of the stuff came from Dawn, because new people were being hired, and they didn't have a new hire packet. They didn't get the personnel bylaws, they didn't get this, and they didn't get that. And, that's what I'm saying, is that, that was what my thinking was, and that's what should have happened, is that anytime anybody was hired, this should be, you should get this, 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 and that. And then everybody's on the same page.
You guys will share this with Rich.
Right.
And we'll continue discussing it, and making a good thing, and there's no storm, there's no storms for the next week, so, all right? We can handle that for now.
That sounds good. Think you're on a good start.
Next, we have Fire. Fire Department, multiple report.
Good evening, everyone, Adam, excuse me, Adam Lavoy, Fire Chief, I actually have two months to report this evening, cause, uh, October was a little funky, I think we only had two selectmen's meetings due to events in town, town meeting and stuff, and unfortunately, I was tied up on both of those for other events, so, uh, I have my October two thousand and twenty-four report. Responded to thirty-six fire calls, uh, in two thousand and twenty-four, which included five motor vehicle accidents, four medical assists, six activated alarms, two, uh, two calls were canceled, uh, service, eight service or assist calls, one structure fire, one good intent call, one power line incident, two investigations, uh, one oil burner issue, three illegal burns, and two brush fires. The ambulance responded to sixty-seven calls in October, uh, two thousand and twenty-four, and fourteen ALS intercepts were required for those calls. Did a few inspections, uh, like we normally do, which included eight smoke and CO inspections, two propane tank inspections, two oil burner inspections. In terms of activities and meetings, Warren EMS held in-house EMT refresher training, that's required that we do every two years. We're also in the process of updating our license, uh, which is also, uh, every two-year process, uh, they should be coming out for a full inspection of our ambulance license and ambulance procedures and everything, uh, more than likely in February, so, the state comes out and, and we're required to do a whole application process and everything, and, and we're required to do, make sure our EMTs have a, a refresher every two years, so we got through that, and it was a long process, it's a couple days worth of training, but it's, you know, it's, it's good training. We also hosted an online medical director lecture through Bay State Health, uh, which was very informative, uh, these are, they talk about, uh, These are, they talk about high acuity calls and things like that. They make sure that we're doing protocols. We've actually had a couple of those. It comes up in our next, our next month as well. So we had a lot of, a lot of good training this, in October. Warren Fire Personnel trained on search and rescue skills. And we, we did that. It acquired a structure in town that we use for training sometimes. So that, that worked out well and was well received. In terms of the budget, we had conducted our interviews for our open full-time firefighter EMT position. We had three finalists for that position and we selected Colby Kokosa. Colby comes to us from Beltratown. He's a call firefighter in Beltratown. He's a young man, he's very smart, firefighter one and two certified, EMT basic certified. He's far and away, has a lot of qualifications already at a young age, and he was selected as a top candidate. He was offered the job and he, he took that job. He spent, my next month's report, he spent the entire month of November pretty much on orientation, getting all the paperwork and all of the things he needed to do before he was cut loose on his regular shifts. And he's now been cut, cut loose and he's on work, and in fact, he's on tonight. So he's been a great addition to the department. He was very well, you know, he was very well promoted by Beltratown. Unfortunately, we had a full-time position open and they didn't. So, so he's, hopefully, he sticks around for a while because he's, he's, he's been very involved with the department thus far. So it's been a busy month, October and November. November of 2024, we responded to 62 calls for fire, which included five motor vehicle accidents, 13 medical assists. Medical assists are typically second ambulance calls that our ambulance is already out, so EMTs go to the scene and they provide care until another community comes in and takes that person out when our ambulance is already on a call. So that's what those medical assists are, and we have a lot of those. Activated alarms, three. We're canceled four calls. Service or assist calls, we had 12 of those. We had three structure fires, one carbon monoxide call, three power line incidents, four investigations, seven illegal burns, brush fires, three, vehicle fires, one, cooking fires, one, mutual aid, two. The reason why your illegal burns were up was this is when the burning was pretty much canceled throughout the state. It was canceled throughout the state and we were very, it was, this is by far the most active brush fire season I've ever seen in my career. And I think you'd ask any fire chief, they'd say the same thing. It was super active, tons of fires around the state, all over the place. We were going to mutual aid constantly. I'm proud to say that our community did not have any active brush fires, so kudos to people. You know, we had to remind a few people to not burn, and that's why those numbers are up a little bit, but generally speaking, we did not have any jet, out-of-control brush fires caused by illegal burning. So that's a good thing that we're proud of. We responded to 66 calls for EMS, 12 ALS intercepts were required. We did five smoke and CO inspections, three propane inspections and three oil burner inspections. We did not hold an EMS training in November because we had so much training in October, including those, those M and M rounds with our Bay State Medical Control Doctor. Warren Fire completed their practical portion of the pumps and hydraulics class that I talked about last time I did our report. It was a three-day course altogether, two days worth of classroom, talking about the science of pumping and gallonage and hydrants and all that kind of stuff. And then the last day we had in November was a hands-on skill day that we held in the parking lot at the Wright's Complex where everyone actually got their hands physically on the pump. We moved a lot of water, did a lot of drafting and stuff. So I think that was a great refresher for all of our driver operators and even new people on that aren't driver operators yet. They could get their hands on the levers and see how everything works and get an idea of if they were to choose to try to go through that course and, and become a driver and an operator. So it was a great class. Continually watching the budget, no red flags here. As I mentioned, firefighter Colby Kokosa has had his orientation time. He had an entire month to get, get his feet wet, make sure he wasn't thrown in the deep end and, and uncomfortable and make sure he had all the skills down and all the proper paperwork and everything. So this has drastically helped us to strengthen our staff now, get us back up to full, you know, full staff. So we have very few shifts that are open right now. You know, obviously, people call out and we have to do, it is what it is. And we're continuing to, to move in a, in a direction to, you know, keep up with all of the call volume that we have. But having him come on board and fill in that open shift was great. So, any questions?
No, sir.
David?
No.
Very good, chief. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you. Next, we will review and discuss and possible vote on the fiscal year 2026 budget guidelines for all departments to follow anticipative vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So as you may recall, last meeting, we had our, we approved our budget calendar for fiscal year 26. Along with the budget calendar, I had asked if the board could think about between last week and this week where they would like to see departments go in terms of giving them a directive of, of, of budgeting for fiscal year 26. And, you know, the directive last year was, you know, level services. Providing the same services, but obviously taking into consideration some adjustment in terms of additional costs for utilities and, and additional costs for inflationary things. So as I mentioned at the last meeting, you know, fiscal year 26 and 27 with the state is going to be, some challenges have, have, have been identified. And they are going to be watching revenues and obviously with the onslaught of a new administration coming in to see how it will affect states across the nation. Massachusetts obviously being one of them. So, you know, I think we, you know, it's best to err on the side of caution and, and to continue the same directive from last year to this year, I think is, 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 is smart, and that's what I would recommend.
Thank you, Jim. I, I think, you know, if we keep level services for most of it, unless there's, you know, like, I, I heard sometimes as fire chief with police, they need a little bit more extra. It makes a lot of sense.
Right.
And obviously, if a department has a compelling reason, you know, that they can, you know, that they can stay.
They can justify.
You know, and justify, you know, that, that can be looked at, but that the overall directive should be, you know.
I guess this is something we've all been doing in our own houses, so today too, so, you know, you sacrifice for something that it, you know, justify that, you know, the cost. What do you think, David?
Well, I think the coming year is going to be it's going to be I think the economy is going to get better. Economy will get better. I have hope for that. There's a lot of good signs of that. Unfortunately, I don't have confidence in our state leadership. Because I got a feeling our current governor is not going to be very cooperative with the federal government, and that could hurt us through grants. And our town has hurt us, had lots and lots of grants. And I think the lack of cooperation is going to cause us some problems, and we're not going to get that grant money that we're used to. And I think we need to watch our, our funding right now, and I think level services is the way to go. Because although I think everybody's going to do well and, you know, I think a lot of people are going to do better financially. I don't think the town's going to have the accessibility to things that we used to. Unless political climate change is a little here. So I, I would agree with level services. And see how it goes.
Do you think?
Maybe next year we can do something different, but right now it's been working for us and you know, I, I think the departments are very responsible, and if they need something, they ask for it, and we try to provide it for them if we can.
Do we need to vote for this? Have Rich? I guess.
It depends. I mean, if the board, the board should vote on it, but I just don't, you know, if you want to wait till Rich or, or not, it doesn't, you know.
I think he'd be good with level services too.
Yeah.
He's been that way since then.
Okay, just make a motion.
We could always table it if you want, or we can just vote for it.
No, I would like you to make a motion, please.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2026 budget guideline to be level services.
I second that. All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye. Motion approved. Thank you much. Review of American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, funds with a discussion and possible vote on a potential uncommitted funds. Anticipative vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As I mentioned at last week's meeting, we have approximately $16,500 left of uncommitted ARPA funds from various projects that, you know, had a surplus or came under budget. And, you know, I know the board at the last meeting had asked me to look into a couple of things. I was able to get a quote from Mass Corps for a new desk system, a five-seater desk system for the selectmen and planning board meeting room. For, for, for any meeting room, and, you know, it doesn't have to be just selectmen or, or planning board, but for anybody to use this room. That would be, a sales quote came in, and that's under, under seven, under your tab in your file. Mass Corps came out, Steve Crystal and Sully, his supervisor, came out this week. I, I, we specifically asked them, number one, will this be ADA compliant? Because that's my number one issue, to make sure that what we're, what we're putting in is going to be ADA compliant. They are under the impression that it is. I had then asked Karen to send out a correspondent to our building commissioner, just to have him look at the plans and get his final approval. As long as he's, you know, okay with it, then I would be comfortable with recommending this to the board. The quote for the maple U-shaped desks is $9,039.29. And so they would, they would honor, actually, they quoted this a couple of years ago or so, and they're honoring the same quote. This quote has gone up by at least $2,000 from, from when they originally quoted it. If the town wants to move in that direction, and if the board wants to move in that direction, that would be the cost to getting this, this maple U-shaped desk. The, the matting or the finish would, would match the room, and I thank Karen for, for helping us out with picking the, the color scheme for that. They would match the, the existing podium here and the floor. You could see that there's a, there's a drawing there of what it would potentially look like. So that's one of the possible uses of money. The other possible use is on the technology side. The board had asked for a, an owl that could be, you know, mounted on the, on the, on the wall, on the ceiling. I have asked Entree to look into that. I haven't gotten any information back yet from them. I'm hopeful to get some information back for the next meeting.
Well, it's $16,000 we have, right? That's going to be a mount that should only be a couple hundred bucks.
Well, I, I don't know if that, that device could be just mounted. I mean, you may need a whole new device. I don't, I don't know. Can you, you can mount that?
Yeah, we just need a four-millimeter thread on the ceiling and that's it.
Travis looked into this and he said, because these are false ceilings, that it is a little more complicated than just putting a thread in.
Oh, well, no, you have to ignore the ceiling and anchor to the building. Yeah.
Here comes Travis.
I think the most expensive part is, is running the wires.
Heard my name.
I was the same, what you said.
How you doing, sir?
Oh, okay. Yeah, I, Rich had mentioned it to me. I did start looking into it. Owl Labs.
Just mention who you are first.
Oh, yeah. Travis Baker, Cable Advisory.
Thank you.
So Owl Labs, their website specifically says, don't mount it to a drop ceiling. I'm assuming because they don't want to have to worry about somebody saying, you know, oh.
It fell?
Yeah. They have recommended, it, it's basically a post on a pole that you bolt to the ceiling, and it has the bracket for that. I just, they sell them in all different sizes, everything from like a foot to six feet. I don't know how big of a gap it is between the drop seal.
How much was the six-foot one?
They, they, they were under $150 for. I, I think the, you're probably going to have.
It's probably, well, if you look at the windows, you're probably looking at about three to four feet.
I, I would say between the bracket, the USB cord and, you know, running an extension cord for the power, you're probably
300?
300, and that, that's given a lot of weight over them. Because some of the brackets I seen were like $56.
I was under the impression that you were going to get a whole new device. No. Oh, okay. No, we, we already checked last week and we can actually flip that. All right. You could actually invert it, so it
Yeah.
If it's upside down.
Okay.
You adjust the picture. I just don't want it getting ruined because we have to keep on taking it out and setting it up and you know, we don't want anybody tripping over the thing while, while we're in here, you know?
Yeah, so I
It makes sense to have it mounted.
Yeah, if you mount it, so you only just be figuring out that the power would be the hardest part because you'd have to run like an extension cord or something to tie in with its current power. I don't know.
Don't, don't take, don't say extension cords around fire chief.
Not in a drop ceiling.
Yeah.
We'd have to, have to have an electrician put a, a drop box in there.
I mean, the other thing they could do is, same way these cameras, they're DC powered, but the actual power brick is up in the studio. They just have a very long power cord that runs from the studio through the ceiling and comes down and goes around. So they, they could actually be made.
Why is it not focusing? Oh, you're adjusting it?
Um, I don't know if they're, you know, you can buy pre-made ones that are, you know, 50 or 100 feet, or you'd have to have somebody make it. But I can actually, I can try to look into that too. And then just be like the USB line for connecting to the computer, but you can, those are easy enough. You can buy those, I think, probably about 100 feet. It's go more than 100 feet, then that's when you start losing connectivity, but they sell boosters for that even too, so. It's definitely doable not to, a couple hundred bucks.
Yeah. I think we could definitely do that, and my suggestion would be put in, you know, obviously put a outlet up there, but have it for a switch. This way we can shut the power off, and it's not always running, because then you don't want somebody, well, I need to go up in the ceiling and unplug it. Because you got to shut it off sometimes. Have, have that outlet so you can flick a switch and shut it off.
Yeah, that'd work.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you, Travis. So I like the desk.
On, on the desk, do you think if we get a polygonal instead of a curve, it will reduce the price?
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
Nope. Same price?
Well, they, they gave us a really good deal on this because they had already bid it out. But I'm sure we could ask.
Need to look at space too.
Well, no, I, the same space, but instead of doing round, doing in small straight sections, which makes the construction cheaper. Instead of being round, making things round in construction are very expensive. And besides that, we will be like very tight together. We need, you know, they're leaving four feet over there and four feet on this side. So it's going to, it will be a little more packed. You know, you're able to say, hi, Karen. Hi, David. Pat you on the back. So think about that too. I mean.
I mean, I'm sure Jim can, you could talk.
Well, you have to have ADA compliance
Yeah.
to get by with the wheelchair.
Right.
And you're going to remember, we're not going to have this space here anymore either.
That's about the space, a little bit more for the four feet. And it will be round, so for us to get in our chairs or whoever is sitting on the, on the chairs, this is the way to go.
You can do a turnaround right there. You'll have at least five feet to do the turnaround with the wheelchair.
Yeah, they don't
Yeah, they don't show that on the plan, but I guess they, they do. It's okay.
It gives plenty of room.
Well, let's just, do we have to decide today?
You, no, you don't.
Okay.
I mean, you've got until next week. I, you know, I would like to get that, that, you know, determination back from the building commissioner, just to make sure that, you know, he's okay with, you know, the compliance issue.
I know for sure it's in Monday morning, so if I don't hear back from him between now and then.
I would like to ask you guys, what, you know, you pick up in your brains about this kind of things.
I've got a couple of things to add. Ray Capaco. I know the consideration right now is about the desk, but I just, the, it's my understanding that the remaining funding would also need to be obligated before the end of the year. And so, I, I'd ask that there be consideration about using all of the money, not just the nine thousand or whatever, nine thousand and change that you're currently considering. I just, I had written down some thoughts here. Let me just read it. Did the board solicit input from department heads, or the town administrator, or finance committee regarding the remaining ARPA funds? I understand that as chief administrative entity in the town, it's your decision regarding these funds. I'm not suggesting that the decision be made by anyone other than yourselves. Doesn't have to be a committee decision or anything like that, but I'm highly suspicious that most of the town departments could identify areas of need that they could put those, those funds to, rather than getting nice new desks, which aren't, which I certainly don't consider a need. I don't think anyone would consider them a need. You don't need new desks, and so, I just had those thoughts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we quickly explore, explore that with the, with the board?
Yeah, I mean, I, I can put it out there. I, I know that I did receive a, an email from Sharon Millie at the Senior Center, looking to get some new carpeting. But again, you know, the department had contacted me about the new, new carpeting. They have to get out and get out and get a quote. I said, "Well, how much is the carpeting, you know, you're looking to install?" "Well, I don't know." I mean, I, I, you know, these are things that require time and, and effort in, in, in trying to get, you know, the appro, the, the appropriate, you know, costs. So, we can certainly send out an email to departments, and I'm certainly sure we'll get a, a laundry list of, of projects. But, you know, we're going to need quotes, we're going to need, you know, something a little bit, you know, firmed up before the thirty-first.
Before next week.
Oh, before next week, because.
Because that's our meeting.
That's our meeting, yeah.
Yeah. Well, since we have to spend it right away.
We know, we don't have to spend it.
No?
We have to have a, a signed agreement with an entity to.
Has to be obligated.
Obligated, yeah, a signed entity. So, I mean, you know, there's other projects that are offsets that, that we could do. I mean, you know, the Senior Center, they had money that was, that was moved over at town meeting. I mean, if the board wanted to offset, instead of using town funds, offset, you know, with ARPA funds on, on current projects, you could do that. You know, or you could, you know, look for new projects, but new projects require quotes, re, re, require research. And, you know, sometimes, you know, depending on the price, would, would, would require some compliance with 30B. The nice thing about MasCor is their MasCor. You, you can buy direct from them. You don't have to, you don't have to do any type of procurement.
Quick question to you, Jim. Are we handicap compliant right now?
No. No, we are not handicap compliant right now, and in the moment that you move and change this room around, you have to become handicap compliant.
Is it okay if we continue like this, from that point of view?
Well, I mean, it could be a problem if, if a board member is elected that has a disability of some sort. Yeah, that could be a problem.
Well, I think we, we could have this still on, you know, on our list. And the installation of this to preserve the technology that we're using, and then the other part, we can move it to another project. Right? If it doesn't, if that, nothing comes from the boards, something that you could have right away, you know.
I mean, you'll probably, I mean, if you're, you know, if you're going to do both of them, so say this project's, you know, nine grand.
That's a thousand.
And say that's a thousand, so you're ten, so you're about six grand left over. So, I mean, that can go real quick amongst departments.
Come, Natalie.
Madeline, Madeline Motosik. I, I mean, I could see Jim send an email to any of the departments here, see if there's something that they need. My opinion for the owl movement, there's plenty of, should be plenty of money in the Shepherd Building to see that, so if somebody needed something for that money, I would say, give it to the department if there's something they need, or you can use it for something else, and this could come as a regular expense for Shepherd Building.
Thank you. Something to consider as well.
Well.
Let's, let's do a little bit of homework, and we'll take a decision next week.
Okay.
And that's it.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Next, we have review and discuss submitted logging proposal by J.D. McKinney, logging for town-owned lots on Mark's Mountain.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. A gentleman had stopped by my office last week, I believe. He lives on Coy Hill Road in town, and his name is J.D. McKinney. And he is currently doing some logging privately for a parcel of land up on Mark's Mountain. He had mentioned to me that the town owns a parcel that abuts where he's currently logging privately. And he had mentioned to me that he wanted to know if the town would be potentially interested in logging some of its town-owned land and getting a fee for it. I said, "Well," I said, "I've never heard of, of this type of situation before. I've never had any experience with this, where it's a, you know, somebody's looking to, you know, potentially provide the town with money for resources that the town owns." I said, "Why don't you put a proposal together in writing, and I can submit it to the selectmen for their review? And, you know, if the selectmen feel that it's, you know, something that they want to get involved in, we can then send it to various town departments to take a look at, to verify that we own this parcel of land, to verify that, you know, that we're not impeding any of the conservation or tree regulations that are currently here in town." So, this is just a, a proposal that is in front of you this evening for your review. The gentleman, again, he lives in town, and he wanted me to bring this before the board so that you can look at it. Now, I would highly recommend that, you know, if, if you are interested in something like this, that we let departments comment on this, and we, we get some feedback from them. I also preliminarily talked to Jeff Blake about this, and, and the concern that I had about this was, how does this work with 30B? And, and what I mean by that is, is that this gentleman is, is proposing to pay for wood that he would be taking down. Well, how do we know that another person in a, in a neighboring community would, would, could potentially offer us more? And, and, and could have the potential of, of us, you know, soliciting them, and they're not knowing about this particular opportunity? So, that's the competitiveness of 30B that we would have to make sure that we had complied with. So, this is a very unique proposal that's before the board, but would require a lot of in-depth work and analysis from various departments, as well as compliance with 30B.
David, any comments?
First of all, I didn't know we owned land up on top of Mark's Mountain.
Right next to the one that's in tax title.
Yeah.
Is that the one they're cutting the trees?
No. No, the one that are cutting the trees is between my house and this house, up on Mark's Mountain.
And we own, what, forty-three acres?
That's what he's claiming. You know, again, this would all have to be verified by the assessors and.
Well, and that's the other thing. If we own it, how did we get it? Because was there an agreement established that it's not to be?
Yeah.
You know, harvested or something? Was it given to the town to be utilized as like a parks?
It could be, you know, I, I, you know.
Hiking trails or something?
It could be for recreational purposes only. You know, there could be restrictions on it. I don't know, but.
Because knowing about it, it would be really nice if we could utilize that for like parks and have it for like hiking trails or something up there, because Mark's Mountain is a nice area.
Yeah.
And I know people ask about having like trails to go on and things like that, and I know we've been working on Lucy Stone. I didn't even know this existed. And it'd be nice to do some research on it and see it, but we need to see how we get the land. Because if there was a precondition that, oh, the town accepts the land, but we're not to log it or do anything else, we'd be violating that. And, you know, I understand the guy wants to give us twelve grand.
Okay.
And twelve grand would be dice, but.
My feedback. First of all, I hate cutting trees. The, all the things that we learn from the solar arrays when they cut trees, that we get problems with water runoff, especially on steep hills. So, that's another no for me. I would love to see this.
Is this guy doing select logging, or is he just?
He's doing select.
Clear cut?
No, he's doing select, but even, even select, you know, tree is a tree. And I love the idea to find out about this land and, 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 you know, look at the opportunities that we have for, you know, a nice hiking trail for parks. But no cutting, at least, not for me. Do you want to say something?
I was just going to say, you guys are talking about trees. Tree Warden has a lot to say.
Right.
Yeah, and, and, and also conservation, you know, they have a lot of knowledge of what happens when you cut trees.
What, what I'm, what I just wanted to bring to the board's attention is, number one, obviously, this gentleman lives in town, and I wanted you to be made aware of the proposal. Number two, this is going to require a lot of investigation, and if the board has no appetite for this, I would recommend that, you know, we just, you know, notify the gentleman, unfortunately, we're not prepared to move in this direction at this time.
Well, again, logging has its advantages, because it does, if you look at it, and it, land that's not properly maintained can become a problem. I, I don't know, Fire Chief would know more about that, as far as like maintaining and having a, a logging plan in place to clear out problem logs or potential fire areas. It could have benefits, but I also don't want somebody coming in there and taking out a whole bunch of beautiful trees that the area is known for, too.
I mean, I, I don't really have a lot of information to offer him with that. I mean, I know, I know this gentleman has done logging in this area. It is a selective cut-type situation. They certainly isn't a, you know, certainly isn't, you know, a clear cut by any, by any means. I mean, I, I know that. I don't know how much, how many acres are up there, if there's, you know, you know, what is up there.
Same, forty-three acres.
Yeah, I, I honestly just don't know enough about it. I'm assuming it's mostly inaccessible, other than just from that other lot. I don't, I can't imagine it's anything that.
Well, it's accessible from Crouch Road?
Yeah, I, I, I mean.
Jeremy hiked it today.
Relatively rough terrain. You know, usually they build, you know, temporary roads in and out of there to, to be able to, to get in, get in and get out, get out there. Like I said, I, I know that, I do know this gentleman a little bit, and I know he does, you know, this is, this is what they do. I mean, they, they, you know, they, they, they offer monies for, you know, for, for getting wood off of people's properties. I've never heard any complaints about them or any other, other issues there. I mean, you know, but I mean, there's a whole process that's very regulated, this industry, in terms of what they can take, what they can't take. They just don't go in there. They have to walk it with a forester or the whole nine yards. I do know that. Being involved in some of the brushfire stuff and everything, I mean, it's, it's not like they just go in and start cutting. They have to, everything has to be pre-selected. It has to be walked and, and, and everything first, so. Other than that, I really couldn't offer a lot of insight there.
Well, even if considered in the option of logging for two hundred and eighty dollars an acre, it's not a lot of money, and if that happens, having a nice trail or, you know, hiking place will, will be different. You know, as a fully vegetation there, but like you said, we need to talk to other experts on the matter to advise us and, you know, what to do. Personal opinion for me, cutting trees, no. I just, you know, that's, that's just me, but for two hundred and eighty dollars an acre, I think it's not a lot of money to invest in trying to figure out all the diligence that this opportunity is coming to town.
Yeah, I, I don't know how many trees he's taken out of there, but a mature oak tree is, you can get some pretty good money for. Whether it's, you know, depending on the grading it is, if it's utilized for firewood, not much money, but if it's utilized for hardwood purposes.
A desk, that's about the same price?
Hardwood is very expensive right now, and for, it's, it's forty-five dollars for a little six-foot by twelve-foot.
Plant.
By.
Yeah.
Three-quarters of an inch sheet, you know, plant. Did Jeremy give any insight on it?
He says you can't do it. Because the town owns a tree, and if you're going to go up there and cut trees, he's going to have to have a tree hearing on every tree you are going to cut. And going up there from the, from Crouch Road up is very, very steep, so you're going to have to cut it down. You cut it down, you're going to be in, dumping water all over that road, which, oh, by the way, it's going to come right down to Reed Road where it already floods.
Okay. Here we go.
I, I could wait for Rich's input and other experts, but to me is, no. I don't want to see like that.
Again, I, I'd like to know what other people say, and I, I'd like to see Jeremy, see if we can get Jeremy in here to talk about it. I'd say table this till next meeting, see if Jeremy can come in, and I'd like Rich's input on that, too.
Jeremy will be here, because we have a tree hearing next.
Okay, so, before you start, Joe. Select logging could be good because it could clear out some land for recreational use, for trails and things like that. But again, I'm not a fan of cutting down trees either, but sometimes it has to happen.
Think about the animals that live there. They will have to go somewhere else. Water.
Conservation, I saw an opinion last night, because I brought it up to them. So, they said that they, they were very concerned about the runoff, because the property, and we were just handed this last night. We didn't know, and it was already approved. The property right next door to this has already been approved to cut a ton of trees off.
How many acres, you say?
Is that going to be an eyesore?
Well, okay, this is, this is where they're planning on cutting. This is my house right here, so they're planning on cutting all, throughout all of this. Exactly how much, I don't know.
I, I got a.
That's from the state has approved that already, we can't touch it now.
There was a resident concern that they, somebody was trying to go ahead and and apply for a. Solar array in their area, must be because of this. That's gonna be an eyesore, it's so beautiful over there. So now we're gonna have more problems of water down on, on that part of the uh.
Well, they're not clear cuts, right?
No, I don't believe they are clear cutting, they're select cutting. I don't think the state would have approved clear cutting.
Still, I believe that the water runoff is gonna be significant with all that steep hill.
Well, the select cut and they leave the root systems intact. They leave all the vegetation around, they they take what they need, the mature trees.
I think it works on a relatively flat surface, not on a.
And this piece of property is, if you looked at that map, the little cutout right up there in the corner is right there. This piece of property that we're talking about is right next to that.
Yeah, because they've, they've select logged up by me a few times. And initially, it's horrible. But it all grows up and then it gives the younger trees. More room to grow and they do, they flourish, they grow.
Yeah.
You don't have the, you know, the big twenty-inch trees anymore. But you, you got plenty of trees that are left still that take over and they flourish and they do well. Do you want like Joe to?
Joe, please, forgot about you, sorry.
Uh, Joe Contra, resident. At one time I went to school to deal with forestry. And I can tell you that if a slope is more than fifteen percent, you take down a tree, the slope is gonna go downhill. With the amount of rain we've had in this area in the past couple of years. I would say that you would be looking like California mudslides. Entire embankment is going. Once it starts moving, it takes all the trees with it. I agree with Derek, this is not a good proposition.
Yeah, that that one doesn't concerns me much, but the new thing that's happening, it's devastating to my heart. Thank you, Joe, thank you for for that, yeah. That took my, my, my dreams away.
Yeah, I I wouldn't agree with the amount of trees that are already being removed.
But didn't. Highway said that they have to come to do a, well, that's town property.
That's town.
Yeah, oh, too bad.
But I'd still like to know more about it because I I think it'd be great for recreational use. You know.
Oh, for the town property, absolutely, we we gotta find out that. So maybe from, as bad as it sounds, maybe we get something good out of.
Because it looks like it goes up on a nice little peak, I'd like to see, I don't know, I, I'm thinking I might actually take a hike up there now.
Yeah.
And see it, see what the.
Well, I know Philip has taken a hike up there and he says it's absolutely gorgeous. He parks over by the um West Warren Water Tower, hikes on up. And he says it's gorgeous, I know Jim, my Jim has hiked up there a ton.
Yeah, I'd like to go up there and, you know, oh, maybe we can schedule something and do a hike up there to see it.
Yes.
Because then could be something we could do like um. Maybe parks would be interested in that property.
Can you imagine that, if we have a hike all the way to the top and then we have a.
Well, people have talked about it, like, why, why haven't we done something with the mountains here and have a mountain view and? Put like a, I don't know, something on the top there, hike up to the top, a trail.
The, that one that you have is right here.
Where are they gonna cut the trees here?
It's this area.
Oh, this?
Yep.
That's just above the wetlands down?
Well, the wetlands is down here. This is Reed Street.
That gets flooded every year.
Right here gets flooded every year, this is the creek that goes through my property.
We're, we're in deep trouble. Okay. So let's get feedback from professionals and Rich and.
We'll table it.
Yeah.
I've got it, table.
Okay, next, we've got final review of quote from Work Horse Construction for the Shepherd Building Painting Project.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, so um for Work Horse Construction. He is looking to start uh potentially on Monday. On the um entranceways, hallways and um after the holiday. After the nineteenth, he will start on the selectman's office. So the total is eight thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for the labor. The material, we're estimating at somewhere around twelve to thirteen hundred dollars. And so um. The uh, the labor um is inclusive, so before we had uh, we had just the labor for the. Entranceways in the first hallway, now we have the selectman's office, we got the.
Well, not the selectman's office, this office.
Yeah, the meeting, the meeting room, yeah. And so it's eight thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
I was really excited, I thought I got my office raining day.
No, it's the meeting.
So, we're working with a, a small um in-town um vendor, okay? So I would ask that, you know, if the board wants to move forward with this, that we authorize four separate checks. In the amount of two thousand sixty-two dollars and fifty cents. So as. Percentage of the work is completed, twenty-five percent, fifty percent, seventy-five percent, a hundred percent, I will release the checks accordingly. So um, you know, this is a, you know, we're being creative to help the small-time vendor. We're, we're, we're gonna buy the materials uh upfront, I've asked Chief LaVoy to borrow the Lowe's credit card. So that we can uh buy the materials, we're paying for them and then we're just paying the labor. The other issue of.
He's scraping all the old paint and fixing.
Correct, yes.
Because like the. All that, put the plaster in there?
Yeah.
Because I don't want him just painting over it and have it.
No, we told him to fix it.
He's repairing everything too.
Repair, yeah. The other issue, I know I had run into Sylvia Buck uh in the uh here. And um she had expressed a level of concern when I was talking about, we were doing some painting and. I was measuring um an area for, you know, the potential um quilt to be hung um in there. And she was concerned about the Hall of Fame, the Wall of Fame being moved or relocated out of that area. She had written a letter here um about that concern. And so we could keep the Hall of Fame, the Wall of Fame there and and move the quilt a- a- across the hall. Uh, if the board would like. But if the board wants to move the Hall of Fame or Wall of Fame. Then um I guess she's looking to um, to know where, where specifically. We could relocate it in, you know, what, 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 what their, what the plan is.
Well, to be honest, they're all old pictures, I understand her concern. But we need to update now and think about now and the future. And a lot of those pictures are people that have worked here years ago. And a lot of them are pictures of previous selectmen, which. You know, can be taken down, I don't really care about that too much. And she can preserve them. But I think we need to move past that, we haven't honored anybody in town. For ten years or longer. If we wanna do that, I think we need to honor new people. And set up a new wall. And stop honoring the people that we have now that are working hard in our town and doing contributions now. Having pictures up there from two thousand and four. You know. I think it's, let's move on.
She could, she a lot, very concerned about the, those pictures?
She was concerned about losing the town's historical past.
It's not losing the past.
What if we move it upstairs?
Yeah, I mean, I certainly can tell her that if that's what the board would like to do.
We could even move it inside those cabinets because they're looking at doing those cabinets over up there. And she's gonna have a lot of room to put historical things in there, she could put them in the cabinets. But having pictures of. You know, people that haven't worked here in many, many, many years.
Other option is also that bulletin board that's outside of your desk, your office. If she wants them on a wall, you could put it there.
So if we put, if we, if we can say we're gonna have them there temporary until we build that other wall with the cabinets?
Sure.
So you said something about a quilt, can I just ask, do you have a quilt?
It's just.
So it's a, it's a large quilt um that's in a um, in the cement room, I think it's eleven by eleven. It's of the town. And I know Mrs. Buck in in previous conversations, I think I mentioned it to you, David. She was looking to get that displayed. And so um we could get that displayed, um it would be in, you know, we would have to make a case like.
Yeah, you don't, you can't have the last upper case.
Right, so you'd have to have some type of case um for it, but it would, you know, potentially be, you know, something new addition to. Instead of it being in the, in the cement room.
You have to do a lot of very delicate care with that quilt.
Well, leaving it downstairs in the cement room, it's just getting ruined.
Right.
Because there is moisture down.
Is it in this room?
This room, this cement room.
It's in this one? That's better than being downstairs.
Yeah.
So baby steps, tell her that we will move those pictures upstairs.
Okay.
But the, you know, the future plan is to make that nice cabinets over there for all that material.
Okay.
Yeah, she's gonna have an entire section of a hallway, she could put all historical stuff in.
And the quilt will work on, on something to preserve it.
Okay, I just, I just wanna be, make sure, so we're gonna, we're gonna paint over. The, the, that section where all the pictures are, right? And then we'll put the quilt there, right?
We're gonna fix it because remember we took one out and and it was, because it's, it's a.
Yeah.
Because it's not a easy wall to mount stuff.
Yeah.
It destroyed the wall.
Yeah.
You know, so that has to be fixed, we make it look clean, the plan is to put all the pictures upstairs. Temporary until we get that wall of cabinets, especially for historical and special items. So going back to Work Horse? Make a motion?
Yes, as long, as long as you're okay with the quote and, you know, how it's gonna be done, yeah.
Yeah, as long as they fixing all the, this, the um plaster and everything scraped and everything and they not just paint. Because you could see, last time it got painted, they just painted over the stuff. That stuff all needs to be scraped, primed and repainted.
Repainted.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Do we have a motion, please?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the quote from Work Horse Construction for the Shepherd Building Painting Project. And to pay it in four separate payments.
I second, I second that, all in favor?
David DuFreny, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye, motion approved.
Thank you.
Review of quote from Expert Flooring LLC for the repair and refinish of the Cable Advisory Room.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the board, before you, this evening is a quote uh from Expert Flooring. This is to redo, uh, I'm sorry, repair. Part of the floor in the Cable Advisory Room as well as refinish the room. And move the furniture for the refinishing of this. Cable Advisory had asked for us to get, see if, if they could have this done. They have a significant issue uh with some of the floorboards that need repairing and is causing a trip hazard in there. And they would like to see if we could potentially get this done for them.
They're speed bumps. They shouldn't be moving around so quick in there. I'm good with it.
Yeah, me too.
Okay.
So make a motion.
All right, I'll make a motion to accept the quote from Expert Flooring LLC for the repair and refinish of the Cable Advisory Room.
I second that, all in favor?
David DuFreny, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye, motion approved. Review of quote from Mass Corps for U shape.
We already went past that one, that's all set.
Okay.
Tabled next week.
Review and discuss the proposed adoption of a procurement policy for all departments to follow, anticipated vote.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as you recall from last week's meeting. The procurement policy uh was before the board for consideration. There were some formatting issues uh that we had addressed and thank you Karen for the formatting update. The uh Town Council had a chance to look at it, they made some uh minor revisions to it. And they were comfortable with it and. For the board for consideration.
Are you here next week?
Just for a little bit.
Well, we got two hearings at six and six-thirty.
Did, didn't we, you're gonna do it at five?
You have a five o'clock.
Okay.
You have a six o'clock and a six-thirty. That are all hearings and then you have a bunch of other stuff going on.
How long you gonna be handling?
Until six-thirty.
We have, we have a hearing at six and six-thirty.
What is the six-thirty hearing?
The six-thirty hearing is.
CDBG.
CDB. Hearing.
About.
I don't remember.
I think it was for the um. For the, was it the reprogramming of funds hearing?
I don't think so, but it might have been.
Or the Central River Street.
Yeah, what's, let's, let's.
It's one of the two, Central River Street, the reprogramming of funds.
What is it at five?
Five is Town Common.
I really wanna be there. What is it at six?
Tree hearing.
Tree hearing.
Tree hearing. From what area? Is that angry? I'm not sure.
Reason why I was asking is because I'd like Rich to.
Bless this document.
Yeah. I'm good with it, but.
I'm good, but he always finds something.
We also have his name on here too, his sign. And he should be here to.
Could we share this with Rich and do, get it done next week?
Sure, absolutely.
So we table that.
Yeah.
Looks good to me.
Yeah, the formatting issues are taken care of. Yeah, the formatting issues are taken care of, looks good. There's a number on every page now.
I don't wanna be picky, but it's hard to read the little numbers under the tables.
That's why we, we're gonna, we're going to provide a, an actual blow up of the, of the chart with every.
With an annex?
Yeah.
Printed?
In the back.
Just to make sure that everybody can read it.
Yeah.
I could go with my glasses, but. So at five, we have Town Common project.
Six, we have the tree hearing and seven.
Where is that, from what area is that tree hearing?
It is on cutting shade trees and.
It's two trees?
Three.
No, several, several trees.
And there's already opposition on that because.
Yep, there is already opposition on it. And that's why Jeremy went straight to us.
What, where is it?
I'm trying to.
What was it, Joe?
I think that's Cronin Road.
I think that's Cronin Road too, that's what I'm thinking.
Isn't this the one we've already talked about?
Same one? The, the view?
Program, our South Bridge Road, Southwest Road Extension.
This is for solar, right?
I believe it is for solar. But it's National Grid coming to us, not a solar company.
Right, well, National Grid came us, to us before and we determined that we didn't own that land.
South Bridge Road and South Bridge Road Extension. Now the one earlier, the one at six thirty later, sorry.
That's at Rogers Farms.
Community block. Yeah, it is refunding, it's moving the funds. The six thirty hearing is.
That one I'm gonna miss. Okay. You take care of that.
So, yeah, so we have three meetings next week.
So that's the, the tree hearing, South Bridge Road and South Bridge Road Extension, that's the intersection in Rogers Farm.
I think it's on the other side of the road.
And there's opposition?
Yes. That's why Jeremy had to bring it straight to us instead of.
Have you heard from this opposition?
I haven't heard from anybody. Jeremy stopped in today and just, it just reminded me.
Cause it could be one person or it could be a hundred people.
I think it's, well, the guy from National Grid, when he first came and approached me that he needed to set this meeting, said that there was three people at opposition at that particular time.
Well, we'll hear everyone's and see how it goes. Okay, so we're gonna table this.
We're gonna table the curbin.
Yes. So Rich can take a look at it and participate and be part of it.
What's solar? There's no solar over there.
I, I don't know if it's solar or not. I was thinking it was, but I don't know.
Is somebody proposing a future project?
I don't know.
So yeah, all right.
Okay, that's what the hearings is about to hear.
Yeah, so, yeah, Jeremy didn't tell me about that. Sorry.
It's okay. We'll get to it. Review and discuss cable advisory request to approve the following licensing agreements for their live streaming services. A, BMI Broadcasting Music, Inc. B, ASCAP, American Society of Composers, Authors and Publishers. And C, SESAC, Limited Internet Performance License. Sir?
Hi, Travis Baker, Cable Advisory. So I brought this forward to Jim a while back when I had spoke to the school district about wanting to cover more like the school concerts, different events like that. Mr. Joinville, who's in charge of Performing Arts, had concerns because the music isn't licensed. That kinda creates an issue when you're live streaming protected music. So I had discussed it with him and we researched into basically purchasing the music rights to be able to run a live stream. So I had sent the license agreements to town administrator. Here we are. Prices raised for all three, but I believe there, there's an issue with one of them. Town Council had an issue with the license agreements.
Next question, did town council review them yet?
Yeah. Yeah, town council reviewed them. There's one of them, I believe, the ASCAP. Town Council had some concerns, so we're gonna hold off on that one for now. And I, I started a conversation with them to kinda fix the, the issues town council has, but we'd like, at least like to move forward with the other two. And this will cover us for any music we play on the station that covers us legally relies for playing protected music, or copyrighted music rather.
Well, I, I, I know Mr. James, Joinville is not here. I just wanna say that we, we as a town, we are fortunate to have him working for the school. He's a wonderful person, very good guy. And, you know, he's involved in this, I, I'm looking at supporting something like this.
Yeah, he, he was one of the first people I reached out to because I know that's his area with the school and like I said, that was his only concern was, you know, if somebody were to raise a thing because we're live streaming, you know, somebody else's music. We've always been covered on the cable station because Comcast retains those licenses for us on the cable station. But when it comes to live streaming, we, we don't have any of those rights right now, so that was his big concern.
So what is the license fee?
I believe off top of my head, SESAC was just under eight hundred dollars for a year. I believe it's split, or it's like, yeah, seven hundred and change. Split over two payments. BMI and ASCAP were just under, I think one was like three hundred and eighty-seven or somewhere. It, it was under two thousand, I think, for all three of them for a year. It's all based on revenue. And when I spoke to reps with all three, because we don't generate revenue from our live stream, we're in like the lowest category, so we'd be paying the lowest fee they even offer.
And that comes out of your fee?
It come out, yeah, it come out of our, our PEG account.
And you're okay with that?
Yeah, yeah, cause I mean, otherwise the school isn't comfortable with us, you know, like they have the winter concerts and I mean, in theory, when we, even when we do the concerts on common, in theory, we live stream those. We, we should have licensing for them. Mo, I will say, most towns I've talked to don't bother, but they kinda look at it as a, what are the odds a composer's gonna sue us?
But if they choose to.
If they choose to, that becomes a different story. And that was Mr. Joinville's concern was, you know, what if? Because then that creates an even bigger issue, so he were, and yeah, I know he deals a lot with that, especially, you know, doing the play, so it's our. I, I just kinda glanced at like what it goes into as far as licensing for those. For like, you know, Beauty and the Beast they got going on right now. There's a lot he has to put into, to be able to do that, so.
Well, I, I think you're doing the right thing. That's a good thing. You know, as me for experience, I speak about, about pictures, everybody, you know, screenshots, pictures and shares and everything. At some point, somebody will sue you because of that and it's not a very nice experience.
Yeah.
So I think he's doing the right thing.
I would agree.
That was easy.
I, I, you know, we figured for the cost of that. We figured for the cost of it, you know, it's under two thousand for the year. It, it's, you know, minimal cost to, you know, be safe.
Do we have any comments? From the public?
Like you said, it's the right thing to do.
Thank you, sir. Do we need to discuss this anymore? Is this something that we approved?
So the ASCAP agreement would, would have to be tabled. The other two agreements, town council has approved. And the issue with the ASCAP agreement is, there's a section, Article nine in that agreement, where it talks about indemnification. The town would not be able to indemnify this corporation because that would be literally a, an unfunded appropriation. We, 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 we don't have the funds to indemnify this corporation. If they get sued and we get draw, dragged into a lawsuit with them, we wouldn't have the funds appropriated to, to defend them and typically towns don't indemnify anybody.
You two guys talk about that?
Yeah, and I, I raise a concern with ASCAP there. I forwarded that off to them to see if, you know, they can either modify it or work with us somehow. I mean, worst case if, you know, turns out we, you know, decide not to move forward with that one. There is a bit of overlap between all three licensing companies. So it'd just be a matter of, you know, we could look and see, you know, if anything we're gonna broadcast, if it's not covered. Might be covered all, you know, partially under BMI, so it'd still be covered. And if it's worse that, you know, we're solely under ASCAP, then we just can snip that section of a, you know, that one or two songs or whatever.
So each of them ca, cover specific groups?
Yeah, yeah, each of them have their own.
Like maybe jazz or something like that?
Right, but there's also a lot of overlap. So one artist might share licensing with BMI.
So.
Or all three, there, there's a lot of overlap. But they do have like a, a database that you can easily search and you just put in the artist's or the song info and it'll tell you who the licensing is through, it'll actually tell you the percentage. One company might own fifty and the other might own, you know, fifty or, you know, thirty, thirty and whatever. They, they split it multiple ways, so I mean, it'd be, if we don't go forward with ASCAP, then it'd just be a matter, before we broadcast it, we'd have to look to see what we're publishing and, okay, we don't air that one song or two songs.
Okay, so going forward, are you okay with us approving or voting for the other two? And then you're gonna keep working on the other?
Yeah, I'll, I'll keep working on the other one and, you know, we'll, we'll go from there. Whether, you know, we, we can move forward with it or we just leave that one out.
Sounds good, we're gonna make a motion and go forward.
Yeah.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve cable advisory's request for licensing agreements for BMI Broadcast Music, Inc. And SESAC Limited Internet Performance License.
I second that, all in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye, motion approved.
Travis.
Thank you.
Warrants and bills.
Okay. I'll make a motion for the following warrants. PR Senior Work Off for seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Second? All in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye. Motion approved.
For the following bills, I'll make a motion for Merrick O'Connell for one thousand four hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty cents. C2MA Adams for a total of one thousand seven hundred and forty-six dollars and nine cents. Verizon for a total amount of seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty-seven cents. Crystal Rock for ten dollars and fifty-eight cents. Stericycle for one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-eight cents. Encore Fire for one thousand two hundred and one dollars and twenty-eight cents. Workhorse for eight thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Vanpool for four thousand two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and ninety-six cents.
I second that, all in favor?
David Dufresne, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye. Bills approved. None minute, no minutes? Town Administrator report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board this evening. So it's been a pretty busy week so far. I'm, I'm pleased to report to the board that the Department of Revenue, just the other day, I believe on Tuesday, certified our fiscal twenty twenty-five tax rate at fourteen dollars and eighty-one cents. So it has been submitted. It is certified for fourteen dollars and eighty-one cents per thousand. I wanna thank all of the departments, the financial departments, the FinCom, the, you know, all the boards, commissions, the selectmen, for all the hard work that they've done to, to get us to this, you know, spot. You know, it's, it's nice to say that, you know, you know, along with, you know, this particular rate, although the rate doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to have a low tax bill or a reduced tax bill. But from all of the information and the indications that, that we have looked at, taxes this coming up year have now been stabilized. And some individuals will see a reduction in their taxes. And so this is a culmination of a lot of hard work for all of the departments, like I said, boards, committees, working into getting into this, to this spot. You know, our, our increase in our budget was reasonable at three point nine percent as, uh, uh, over fiscal year twenty-four to twenty-five. That's a reasonable increase. And that wasn't, you know, taken into consideration, all the hard work that went behind that. So the, the many meetings of the FinCom, of the Selectmen, of the capital planning, of the department heads, of everybody coming together to say, hey, look at, you know, can we save a little bit here? Can we save a little bit there? Those are all critical discussions that helped us get to that, 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 that increase in the budget. So three point nine percent is a reasonable increase. You know, also coupled with the fact that property values did not continue to climb as they did in twenty-four and twenty-three. That also helped us, okay? Along with good budgeting and sound budgeting practices, the increase in the, in the rise in, in, in values were not as significant as, as the previous years. So it's important to understand that the tax rate, fourteen eighty-one is a nice number, but it doesn't necessarily mean that you will have a low bill. Taxes for, for fiscal year twenty-five are stabilized, they're stable. Some people are going to see a reduction in their taxes, which is a good thing. And so I know that one of the selectmen had mentioned, well, what was our, our rate over the last, you know, ten years or so? Well, I'm proud to say, you know, for the last ten years, that is the lowest rate. Fourteen eighty-one is the lowest rate. So in, since two, since twenty sixteen, we were in the, the, the high nineteenth. It was nineteen dollars and eighty-four cents in twenty sixteen. In twenty seventeen, it went to eighteen fifty-six. In twenty eighteen, it went to seventeen thirty-two. And stayed pretty consistent within the seventeens all the way up until about twenty twenty-one, where it got into fifteens. Fifteen ninety-six in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two was fifteen fifty-six. Twenty twenty-three was fifteen eighty. Twenty twenty-four was fifteen oh seven and then, then today, twenty twenty-five, fourteen eighty-one. So it's the lowest rate in, 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 in ten years. But again, that doesn't necessarily mean all of those, you know, as soon as you have the lowest rate, you're getting a low tax bill. Again, it was the hard work of the departments by making sure that the budget came in, you know, in, in a certain number. Working with departments, cutting spending and adding services. Imagine that, adding services. We added a new police officer, we added a new fireman. We added a, a, a part-time park and recreation coordinator. recreation coordinator, we made investments into our buildings. So we didn't cut services, we added some, and we were still able to produce, you know, this great, you know, tax relief for the residents. So, you know, the average single-family value home based on the department of revenue, you know, is two hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars in town. That person in twenty twenty-four, as compared to twenty twenty-five, is going to be paying about forty dollars less. So, you know, it's headed in the right direction. I just wanted to let the board know it's headed in the right direction. And we're going to continue to make strides as we do, and with the setting of the directive tonight of level services, I think we're going to continue to move in that direction and be cognizant and be able to provide continued relief in the future. So with that, I also want to report to the board that we had a, we have made a conditional offer of employment. I've been working with the sewer commissioners to attract individuals for the vacancy that we have. At the sewer plant, we have one individual that we made a conditional offer to. The gentleman's name is Travis Rivera. He lives in Worcester on the Paxton Line. He has been in a wastewater treatment plants for the last three to four years. He's had a license that had lapsed because he didn't need it at the time. He just needs to get it reinstated. And we're going to be giving him three months to get it reinstated as a condition of his employment. He is a retired military. He's a veteran in the Marine, Marine. And he seems to work very well with Ralph, and Ralph was really supportive of his candidacy. So we brought the gentleman in front of the board just this past week. We have a conditional offer. He's got to go through pre-employment physical and drug screen and some other credentialing, and hopefully he will be on the agenda next week for a wage authorization. Not a hire, but a wage authorization for the board's consideration. So we've been doing that. Today, I had a meeting with town administrators in the area in Sturbridge this morning. We talked about ethics and some of the stuff that we were talking about, dovetailed off to what our discussion was last week. Mr. Chairman, when we were talking about, you know, the State Ethics Commission and making sure that, you know, people take their courses and different things. So from that discussion, we, I had consulted with our town clerk, Lori Stockley, and she was able to put together, she was able to call the list from the state of people that the state has recognized as taking, you know, the course. And from that, she was able to cross-reference some of the people that we have here, checking with Dawn on people that are on payroll, and she was able to come up with a list. I took the list of all of the paid people, so anybody who's hitting a pay, I'm going to be contacting them. I've already started contacting them and reminding them that they need to complete this, and it's a new process, and they have to sign up through the state. I provide them with the website and with the paperwork that Lori provides them with. So there's quite a few individuals that were on the list, and so we're just, we're going through it and cleaning it up and trying to get people on. People might have, might have had, have taken it, but they're not in the new system. And Lori, you know, Lori doesn't keep track of the old certificates. She makes it the responsibility of the department. So they may still have certificates that are valid. It's just best practice to get everybody on the new system so that you'll get an email from the state when you're up and you just have to, you just have to do the test. So we're working on that. This week, we had our fire inspection by Chief Lavoy, and I want to thank him for his partnership and his commitment to working and looking at all of our town buildings. I just got his report yesterday, and for the most part, all the buildings seem to be in order. The wastewater treatment plant, he did note that we had emergency lighting taken care of over there last, before this past inspection. We had emergency lighting taken care of over there this past summer. And so that was addressed at the last inspection that Chief Lavoy did, that some of the emergency lighting wasn't working. We had that taken care of, and it's now noted in his report that it's taken care of. He's obviously replaced all the D-Fib pads in all of the buildings, make sure we're in compliance, so we have two years on that. He did notice that all of the fire extinguishers have been serviced by Encore and have been inspected by Encore, and he's, all of the buildings are in compliance with that. He has noted on here, as well as I have mentioned to the board, that there is some egress issues in the gymnasium here that still need to be addressed. The stairwells have excess clutter, needs to be removed in the stairwells in the gym. And that's critically important, especially if we have youth in there, you know, using the gym over the winter. So I have reached out to the parks and I've asked them if they could, you know, organize the stuff better and move it to another, to their other location on the other side. They said that they would. I'm hopeful that they'll have some extra time, maybe over the Christmas break, to address that some more. The emergency lighting in this building, a majority of it did not pass the inspection of either the fire chief or of Encore. There is a ninety-minute requirement test that is required for the emergency lighting. It works, but it doesn't work for the full ninety minutes, and so it fails. So we're working on, Encore is quite expensive with replacing for emergency lighting, so I will be looking to get some quotes from some local electricians to see if we can, you know, save some money that way. And there is also a, an issue of some corrosion, as well as some of the fire alarm boxes that are in the boxing room downstairs that have been corroded due to weather and due to dampness and issues in there over the years that needs to be addressed. And this we'll be putting before you in a formal proposal next week. So, you know, we've gotten all of the fire stuff addressed, and it's been inspected, and we have a plan that we're going to be coming up with to address the emergency lighting here and some of the issues down in the boxing room as well.
Did we have it take care of the lighting down there in the boxing room?
I didn't know there was an issue with the lighting.
With the conduit, how it's coming down?
No.
Because the fasteners are rusted?
Yeah, no, it's still coming down. That's part of what he was, he took pictures of and said it needed to be fixed.
Yeah, because we were going to have an electrician, yeah, we're going to have an electrician look at that, fix that.
So that's part of his analysis and his quote, that he would address that.
Okay. Because, yeah, we did all that work getting it cleaned up and getting it all dry and, then they went through and killed all the mold.
Right, right, right. So we got to address some of the electrical stuff.
The electrical stuff, yeah.
So we'll have a proposal before you for next week on that. And working with departments on, you know, obviously their budgetary issues, as well as making sure that we get all of our information out there to departments on the calendar, the budget calendar, and what we're going to be working on for next fiscal year already.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ferreira, for your report. I'm glad to hear that the good stuff, it's awesome a lot, and the not-so-good, it's very little things that we have to just make care of it.
These are maintenance things that are just routine.
Yeah, you know, your report, most of the part is good news.
Mostly, yeah.
Yes, sir? Just to add to that, one thing I didn't put on there, and I should have, and I apologize. I did note that the repair to the staircases at the sewer department were also completed. There was the egress on the backside of the building, the stairs were severely corroded, and they were just honestly unsafe. So those have been completely repaired. I did, I should have noted that in there, but that also was flagged last year, and that's been taken care of.
And we got to remind these departments, do not use that calcium chloride on these, the cement walkways, because that stuff will eat up the concrete.
Oh, yeah.
You know, if you're going to use, use regular salt, not that heat stuff or whatever the brand names are, that modified stuff that works really well, but it also destroys any of that concrete, so.
So I was going to bring up as a concern, something similar to that, after the tree lighting.
Talk about the stairs in front of the?
People complain about the stairs on the other side of the road. They were in bad shape. I did, I did went up and down, and I did notice too that.
We've addressed that before, and I was going to bring that up in comments and concerns. So.
Can I ask something to the gentleman?
Yes, go ahead.
On the real estate. Oh, I'm sorry, Tim Barshin. Just on the news that most cities and towns in New England, their tax rates have gone up over thirty percent in the last two years. So I think Warren is doing really well.
He's amazing. And it's all thank you to every department. Everybody, everybody in town has been, is working on it, and it's not a job of one. It's all together like a team.
Absolutely. We got a pretty good FinCom, too.
Yes, it's awesome.
Thank you, Mr. Ferreira.
Thank you.
Any other comment?
No, I agree. Awesome job. It's great to see the tax rate coming down, yes. Depending on how much your house costs, it probably won't affect you too much, but even thirty dollars this year, that helps out, and we're going in the right direction. It didn't go up thirty dollars, it went down. So that's amazing to have, and with a lot of towns that are having really hard problems, we're, as you pointed out, we're adding services and we're still reducing the rate. And it's the lowest tax rate we've had in ten years.
Just think about it, from nineteen to fourteen eighty. It's amazing. I mean, everything's going up, everything. You go out, you know, if they don't go out, well, they do go out, a box of cereal before the family ones were like big and five bucks, now they're small and eight bucks.
Or they emptied half the box. You still get the same box, but you're only getting half a box full. Thank you for your.
Awesome job.
For all that.
Okay. New business? I don't have any new business.
You have no new business?
All business.
We have a correction?
Yes.
Error on the date of the fiscal year for Leona rubble hours, if need. It needs to be fiscal year twenty twenty-five, not twenty twenty-four.
Correct. So you just need to acknowledge that, and then I can let her know that you've acknowledged it and we're good.
We acknowledge it.
Thank you.
Second that. Correspondence, or any other, all business.
Lasting Environmental Solutions, what's up with this?
That's correspondence?
Yes.
It is correspondence, yep. So this was about a, this happened over, I think over the summer, a spill on the Mass Pike, diesel spill. And so they notify us of the, the state notified us that, of the spill, as well as the environmental company has to notify us of the cleanup.
No action taken by the town at this time?
Right.
So they're handling it, the state's handling it, Mass DEP?
Yes.
They're handling it also. They didn't say how many gallons?
Required by law. I mean, obviously, we were there for the containment portion of it, but they're required to give those legal notifications.
Was there a lot of diesel?
I want to say it was like fifty-five gallons or something like that by the time, you know, I mean, but not all of that was released, that was what was estimated on there. So they were, we, you know, we have the same standard protocol, we have to, we have to, anything that's, you know, over a certain amount, we have to notify DEP, and then they kind of take the lead on that from cleanup standpoint.
As long as it gets cleaned up.
I have another in.
Modern Pest?
Besides that, there's another sheet over there, Notice of Internal Site. What way? Oh, that's the one.
It's the same one.
Same one, yeah.
Okay, Modern Pest raised their prices, listen to that. They raised the price. Everything's going up, from one oh eight to one seventeen.
Yep.
This is for the police department.
Police department?
Yeah, get rid of those things. They're costing us money. Plug up the holes they're coming in.
Unfortunately, last time they came, they had three evictions.
Rats or mice?
Yeah.
You know, the cold, it's getting cold, it's cold outside, they want to try to get in.
Yeah, it's actually getting a big, a lot, a very big problem for a lot of communities.
Yeah, it is.
Rats are like everywhere right now. Every community is having a problem with them.
Yeah, I can tell why my dog, it starts barking for nothing. A little thing over there walking.
We got a dog that's a rescue, and the dog is a rat assassin because of the turkey coop and everything, the rats like to go in there, and this thing hunts them down and gets rid of those things better than any cat.
You should offer a service.
I'm thinking about it. He loves it. He gets so excited and goes right after him, digs up the hole, pulls him right out of the hole. Like, wow, good dog. So maybe we'll send him over to the police department for a little while.
Comments and concerns?
I have comments.
We have the steps.
The steps across, we need to have Jeremy look at those. They are town-owned, the concrete steps, the metal plates, and the bolts are coming up. And we should probably get rid, just get rid of all those metal plates, because all those bolts are working their way out, and people are starting to trip over them. I know last year, we had a woman that fell down the stairs from that, and when we were over there, we noticed it, and I seen a lot of chatter on Facebook about it, too. People are concerned. Have them take those metal plates off there. I don't even know why we did that project, other than make ADA compliant for those businesses, but now we own it.
Maybe a good evaluation?
And?
From an expertise, what we do, so we don't run this every year?
I would also recommend sending those businesses, all those businesses, a letter telling them to stop using certain products on that concrete, because that's what's eaten that stuff up. Because it's eating up the concrete. Put them on notice, stop using that, you know.
Well, the intention is very well.
It is.
It is very good, but just using the wrong product may not help the issue.
It's making it worse. It's, it gets rid of the ice, which we want them to do, but you're also destroying the stairs by using that stuff and, you know, the ramp.
Okay, you got it all down?
Yeah.
Okay, any other?
No, that's it.
The public has any concerns? Joe?
Joe Conrad, resident. As a note, the last governor to declare a state of emergency because of snow. was Governor Dukakis. And as I recall, it was two feet of snow that evening. And he shut down the entire state for three days, called out the National Guard. I remember cause I was at Harvard News and we, we were ordered to close. Only emergency services and hospitals were allowed to stay open. A second note. Uh, I believe it was last spring, there was mention of maybe putting a sidewalk down sixty-seven. And obviously the cost would be expensive.
Well, we don't own sixty-seven.
No, but between Coy Hill and Columbus Avenue, there are nine telephone poles without a light. Now, maybe two or three poles could have a night, a, a light added. Because around eight o'clock every night, there's a guy that comes jogging down the breakdown lane.
I see him all the time.
Yeah. Uh, I'm still afraid somebody's gonna hit him.
Well, could, can we identify those posts somehow and get a request?
Well, you gotta remember, that's gonna add money to the town too. And that, that is a state road.
Like I say, you know, there are nine poles without a light. If even two of them could have a light, you know.
We'll, we'll look at it. We'll, we'll bring the issue to the table and, and investigate how, what, what, what we can do to help.
It's something for future thought.
Yeah, because that's gonna add to our contract that we have, because we add more services and then the electric, electric bill for that.
Yeah.
Cause we gotta pay an electric bill for using those lights. And that's a road that we don't own. It, maybe we can get the state to put in some lighting, which I highly doubt they'll do, but. I understand, Joe, but we've tried that because we wanted to get it cleaned up and even Jeremy Olson was very hesitant to clean up the walkway there because a lot of that embankment.
Yeah.
Is starting to wash down and there should be retaining walls put there for that walkway. And we, we can't touch it because if we damage it, the state.
Yeah, but even at that, if you put, say like the police station down there, that might have enough light to light up half of that road.
Well, if we put the police department, if the public safety gets approved there, there's gonna have to be lighting out on the road for the emergency vehicles exiting.
Yeah. It's just food for thought for future consideration.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the room? Anybody? Yes, sir?
Oh, that's a long walk. So I tuned in late, oh, I already said my name. I tuned in late watching that meeting, town special. And the audio wasn't too good. You couldn't hear half the people that were talking. So maybe for the next one, can we do something about that or the next meeting we're gonna have there?
We can, we can.
Yeah, it'd be good. All right. Now, I, I may be wrong on this, but I'm thinking, it was mentioned last week that there were sixty people there. And I'm thinking we have five thousand very generous taxpayers in town. And they're happy with sixty people or a hundred people or two hundred people. Cause it's been going on for over ten years that I know of. And if they're happy with it, then let's leave it alone, I guess. And just the way I'm thinking, anyway. The other thing, um, one of the articles was for, I think it was for, uh, appointed or elected, right? And it got voted down or whatever?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just gonna give you a quick experience from where we are. We've had both appointed and elected. And all I can say about it is if the person is not right for the job, there needs to be a solution. It can't be dragged out for a year, two years, five years, because it's just a disaster, okay? I'm not gonna go into my situation, cause I think you guys are a little familiar with it. But I gave you a couple of quick examples from the past in this town. I believe it was the police chief, I don't know why or when, but that cost the town extra money. I think it was like sixty thousand dollars extra for the end of services or whatever. We also had a similar issue with a former librarian. She couldn't, you know, she wasn't able to do the job anymore after they went to Mars system, computer and whatever. And it took over a year to replace her. And in the meantime, kids were going to different libraries. They wouldn't go in there. Parents were taking the kids elsewhere. I bring this up because when we have a problem in this town, it takes too long to resolve it. And all it does is cost the taxpayers more money, causes hardship for people that wanna do their job right. It just isn't right. And I know you guys got a plate full. But, you know, if it, it doesn't get straightened out by you guys, for instance, who else is gonna do it? You know, and a lot of things maybe you can't do anything about, but the town pulls together, okay? We can resolve the issues. Why do you wanna have problems when things can run smooth? So, you know, it, it just isn't fair to the people that are doing their jobs every day to have an extra burden on people that can't do their job and we can't do anything about it. Okay?
Answer that?
All right, thank you.
Go ahead. So the concern with that, and we understand that, we are concerned about it also. Um, we expect employees or town, um, elected officials to do their job. The problem with having an elected official is it turns out to be a popularity contest and we don't always get the best qualified person. We may get somebody that people like more. And that person, um, may know nothing about their job and could cost the town a lot of money, whether through lawsuits or negligence. Having an, having a hired employee, someone who the town has hired, if the person is not working out, we can fire them. Um, having an elected official, that person can serve out their term unless they're recalled. There have been recalls in towns and we've had a recall in our town on, on a selectman years ago. And it didn't work out. Um, and that person could just run again for that position and if they get elected for the position, they're right back. Yeah, so they're doing the same thing. Um, concerns we have are highway department. Uh, we've had highway supervisors that weren't very good at their job. Then we have guys that are really good at their job. And losing those positions because it's an elected position, because somebody's more popular, could really cost the town a lot of money. But the residents want to have their choice and they want their say, which we understand about. So it's a balance. Um, we try to educate the people, give them as much information. But as you've seen in town meeting, we have five thousand, um, residents in town and when important things come up, forty to fifty people show up to decide for five thousand residents. And that's awfully sad. So it's, it's tough. We've tried to fix it, but we can only do what the town will allow us to do. And if they don't want, they don't want a, a position to be appointed anymore, or they don't want it to be appointed and they wanna elect that person, then they'll elect that person.
I agree. And in my particular instance, it only took five people to vote for that person to come in, for example. Okay, I can understand.
If you could just stand up here at the podium.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If you're gonna.
Oh, man. I can understand, okay, let's not even count the money. Let's say it's hundreds of thousands of dollars that gets wasted by the taxpayer. And some people are okay with that. Hey, some guy just paid six million dollars for a banana. You know, duct taped to a wall. Did you guys see that?
Yep.
Okay, so money, I guess, isn't always the big concern.
The guy that bought that banana ate it.
He said he was gonna eat it, yeah.
He did.
But sometimes it can go way farther in.
Six million dollar banana, yeah.
It can go beyond money, okay? I came in here and I asked for the bells to be rung for my neighbor. A sweet lady that grew up in town, worked in town, lived a very nice life, had a dog, enjoyed life being retired. Because of an incompetent person, we didn't know this till after the fact. I was coming home and the ambulance, Westbrook Field ambulance was there. And they put her out on the gurney and she, her last words was, I can't breathe. I never saw her again. She was gone the next day. Found out afterwards that the unit in her apartment was loaded with mice. And in mice, they have water in that unit, uh, mice droppings. So she was breathing all that stuff, God knows how long. And if the person that knew what their job was supposed to be and did their job right, there's a good chance she'd be around still listening to the bells. So sometimes it's not just money. It can cause somebody severely, which I believe that it did in her case. And that isn't right. You can't fix that. You know, and it should have never happened. People in town, generally in this town, are great people, but it takes a few to spoil it. You gotta fix it.
Thank you. I think Travis came to answer.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just came down to comment on the, the audio for reading. I'm assuming you had trouble hearing when like people in the audience were talking. Yeah, so, well, it boils down to nobody getting up and using the microphone. The, the auditorium's acoustically designed, stage going out, not, we set up microphones, but people aren't getting up to the microphones. There's only, only so much I can do with it, so, um, you know, I think in the future, we just need to encourage people that they do need to get up and go use that microphone versus just yelling from the audience.
Yes, just like we do here.
It, yeah, and that was the whole point of this, cause there's only so much I can do with it.
I wasn't, I wasn't blaming you.
No, no, I just figured I'd explain, cause you know, I, I went back and watched it.
If you knew what the system was before you got here, oh my God, it was horrible.
Oh, he knows. He's very well aware of it.
It's been a lot of work, which is why, why it's more, you know, we changed the ceiling mics and then we decided, well, now they work too well, cause they're, the A C's drowning it out, which is why we went with this. And same thing with the, the school, you know, the mics tie right into our audio, so, sound will be great, but you gotta use a microphone.
Thank you, Travis. I know you're doing the best and we are all doing the best we can.
Maybe next time we could just have somebody walk around with a mic. Instead of having it staged right there, we could have somebody walk around and just hand the mic over. Try that.
That, that was one thing, cause I thought they had done that in the past, um.
They did.
They did, yeah.
Yeah, so I, in some way, you know, that.
Some people have mobility issues and they can't get up and walk over and.
We'll work around it. My, my only last comment I wanna say is it is very, it is very sad that a lot of people work really hard on meetings, trying to take decisions in the best behalf of the town. And when the town goes into the public saying, look, this is what we think and not what we want from tons of hours of meetings and decisions and including everything together, only one point two percent of the population make a decision. So that's, that's what it is.
It's always been that way, that I know of, anyway.
So, um, I don't know, maybe next time we need to hold a, um, appointed official accountable. We'll call this one point two percent to tell them to do their job.
Well, the meetings are actually getting smaller each year.
Yep.
The, the population attending are getting smaller, cause we used to have like ninety-seven, like ninety-something people. Now we're down to like forty-three, forty-four.
Yeah, that, I, my numbers are, for sixty people is one point two percent. Anyway, any other con- comments? I really wanna go home. Good, thank you very much. Next meeting is December nineteenth. We're gonna start at five. I'm gonna have to leave at six thirty for a family matter. Nothing bad. All the other pop is a very good thing. Um, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I second that on the favor.
David Dufresne, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye. We are adjourned.